We're waiting for Yvette and for Dr. Lausten.
So, um, Dan's gonna be, Dan's gonna be a little late. And Greg is calling in on the phone. And so we're just waiting on, uh,
Yvette.
Yvette.
Would need four of us in person right to perform?
Yeah, we just probably need to wait on Yvette, yeah.
I heard so, okay, silly. Uh, in person?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Good, thank you. It's still like the handwriting some. But I was like, I tried to do this.
Yeah.
I was, oh, that's the one.
They have a bunch of show cards. And there was something like,
I don't know.
You didn't, you didn't get it first time?
I'm sure there's tons of them. It's like, All the brands start with make up. It's candy, honey. And I was like, all this.
You can eat sauces.
The coffee's delicious.
Is it?
Yeah.
All right.
Good recommendation.
Well, I didn't know they grow poppy beans in Georgeville tree.
Yeah.
Oh, they do?
That's Georgeville tree coffee.
Yeah.
All packaged and branded and everything. Well, yeah, right next to the Yukos. Yeah. A good little spot there. Was I? That's a good little spot there. I'd leave.
Andrea, would you let people know that we're ready to get started?
For sure. Is everyone here? Jeff and Joaquin?
Yep.
Great, we're ready.
Okay.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay, it is four twenty seven AM. We'll call the meeting to order.
Director Perezkill?
Yeah.
Director Shor couldn't join us. Director Delara?
Here.
Director Lobston is running behind. Secretary Barazza?
Here.
Vice President Rodriguez with us virtually and President Bragg.
Here.
Okay, what's next on the agenda?
The pledge of allegiance.
So for Board Member, Vice President Rodriguez, doesn't he have to be shown online his face?
Yes.
And we also need to approve his participation remotely, right, with the vote?
Because he's not listed, so is there just cause?
There is not.
Yeah, I mean technically, you know, you gotta be on there, your location has to be on the agenda, Greg. I mean, you can certainly observe the meeting, but it's gonna be, you know, unless you're present or you were noticed on the agenda, your location and made available to the public, you can't really participate.
No, I know, I know that, I know that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, as long as you understand you're gonna observe and you can do that, that's great. That's all I'm doing anyway, so.
So he doesn't have to be on camera then?
Just not.
Well, he could, it's, yeah, he can, either way, he can be on camera, it's just that he's not gonna be, he's not gonna be participating, he's maybe observing as.
So we can't call on him or he can't?
He's a member of the public.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's a member of the public, that's a better way to describe it.
Okay, so can we call on him as a member of the public?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, got it. All right, pledge of allegiance. Let's, let's be glad. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Having the agenda.
So.
Again, all in favor, two to the eye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Is there any public comment online or from community?
The comment.
Okay. And off to Sophie and Zoan, strategic planning.
You so much. Welcome back, everybody. Thank you for being here a second night, we really appreciate it. I think you know the entire team. Angelica, Dr. Angelica Jeter, who's on the screen, is going to lead the session tonight. And our focus, as we say, will be our wish to establish definition for the social determinants of health so that we can form the strategic process that we're engaging on with combined and agreed to definition, where he feels comfortable with language, thank you. So Angelica, over to you.
Wonderful. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay. I have been so excited about this conversation all day. And even down to the meeting that we had earlier today about some of the community engagement, the discussions that we had last night, the presentation has evolved to highlight some of the, really the outcomes of our conversations and just to expand the discussion, to include things that we've highlighted throughout our time together, virtually and in person. For those of you who don't know me, I am Dr. Angelica Jeter. I am a twenty-plus year, it's twenty-five, twenty-plus year health equity researcher and scientist. I love talking about equitable health. I've peer reviewed. I've published more than thirty peer reviewed papers that center on equitable access to care. So when we talk about the health determinants, when we talk about social determinants of health, that is my jam. So I was so excited to lead this discussion on behalf of my Zoan team. I love working with this group and I love everything that we are about to discuss. So for the discovery phase, we have done a lot of work to identify these key themes. And I am gonna see, I don't know, it's not letting me share my screen, I'm gonna try one more time. Can you all see my screen now?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, Lea, I'm gonna ask you to move your cursor, thank you. All right, some of the key themes and recommendations that we identified as a part of the discovery report, highlighted what Sophie just said. Number four is this thoughtful integration of, I would say, health determinants, because we're gonna talk about the differences and nuances of determinants of health and those approaches into planning and designing the strategic plan. We really want to ensure that we're all aligned. When we're talking about health determinants, whether it's the determinants of health or the social determinants of health, we want to ensure that we are all on the same page. And thank you to those of you who were able to complete the assessment. I love data, I'm a biostatistician by training, so understanding how people think through data is so important to me. Couple of things that we want to accomplish at the end of this conversation. And can you all see that clearly, the objectives and activities?
Yes.
A little larger.
Okay, thank you. It's so helpful, because it looks massive on my screen, but I don't know how big your screen is. Okay, can you all see it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, okay. Miro is kinda different depending on what you're looking at. So within this session, we wanna build a shared understanding of how we talk about the social determinants of health and the frameworks that will help us measure the impact that we want to see for Coachella Valley. We're going to identify opportunities, well, not just identify, but you've already started this work in identifying ways to integrate the social determinants of health or the determinants of health principles into the strategic plan. And then I want us to identify some strong priorities, things that we want to highlight throughout our conversations as we continue on with our work together. Now, get to the fun part, the outcomes of the survey. Can you all see this chart clearly?
Look at it, yes.
Okay, make it as big as possible. How about now?
Yeah.
Awesome. So, most of you took the survey, we received eleven responses. And as you can see, the group is kinda split to a certain extent. Four people said that we should focus on the determinants of health and use the terminology that's associated with the determinants of health. Five people said that we should focus on the social determinants of health and use that terminology as we move forward. I apologize, it is almost eight o'clock here, my tongue has gotten to here. For those of you who don't know where I am, I'm in Atlanta, Georgia, which means that we have sent people from across the country to prioritize the health of Coachella Valley and we are so excited to continue to do this work. Very oftentimes, when we talk about the determinants of health, we are using terms that are deeply interchangeable. Lea, I think I found a way to present so that you don't have to do it for me, but let's see if technology will be on our side. Can you all see this clearly?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay. So, what we did was took the time to really look at your responses in the survey. We wanted to understand that when we hear everyone who is a part of the staff and the board talk about the determinants of health or the health determinants in general, what do they mean? So we separated the two terms, determinants of health versus the social determinants of health. And this is what we found. When your group talks about the determinants of health, and this is primarily from your responses, not the original definition, you'll see some of that in there because a couple of folks used Google, and that's okay. The determinants of health focuses on elements and factors and conditions that influences a person's or a community's physical and emotional health. When you talk about the determinants of health, what you really mean is their environment, hereditary factors such as genetics, age, history, lifestyle and certain behaviors, healthcare access. What we really wanna understand is how are these nuances and how are these words similar yet different to when you talk about the social determinants of health? The differences that we saw and what you shared with us is that when you say the social determinants of health, you're talking about those non-medical factors. The social factors, the economic factors, environmental factors that focuses on where people live, breathe, work and play. And your group believes that the social determinants of health are a subset of the determinants of health. Some of this is accurate, some of it is information that has evolved over time. And what we know that these terms are very similar, but yet they are very different. Any questions or thoughts about that?
I think we're good, Angelica.
Perfect, okay. So, when we get down to the main differences of the determinants of health and the social determinants of health, I want us to remember that the determinants of health centers on individual behaviors. It's what is your income, what is your social status, your educational level, where do you live? The social support that you have as it relates to your community and your culture, genetic factors that you are, that you have inherited as it relates to predispositions. When we talk about health services, about access and use, as well as sex. That's what we mean when we say determinants of health, those social determinants of health by the pure definition from CDC and other leaders nationally. It's actually what you have included in some of your strategic planning or documents. We're talking about economic stability, education access and quality, healthcare access, neighborhood and built environment and those social contexts. So what does this actually mean? We need to decide whether or not, within the strategic plan and how you move forward, if you wanna focus on those individual level characteristics and behaviors that primarily centers the influence of biology and environment? Or if you wanna focus on the social and economic conditions, or is it a little bit of both? I want people to understand that the impact is less about the context, because again, they're similar but very different. But it's about how do we measure this work, right? When it comes to measurement and science, we're asking very different questions when it comes to the determinants of health and the social determinants of health. With the determinants of health, and when we're measuring impact is, are you going to the doctor, yes or no? And you just say no. Do you have a clinic or hospital in your community? No, we aren't looking at the full context of it. With the social determinants of health, as it relates to frameworks and measurement, if you ask someone, are you going to the doctor and they say no? You ask the question, why not? And they say, I don't have a car to get to the doctor's office. I don't have a doctor who understands me, my language or my culture. I don't have health insurance. Or I should say, I don't have a clinic in my neighborhood or my community. Those are the major differences when it comes to measurement, although we use these phrases interchangeably very often. Any questions about that?
Can you give an explanation, a better explanation, maybe a picture, an instance for how that happens?
Absolutely. So here's an example. There is, yeah, this is.
Needs to be bigger. Angelica, is there a way to make that a little bit bigger?
Can you see it?
Thank you, yeah.
It is so, this is so interesting. It is massive on my screen, I'm glad I know what's on it. Okay, thank you so much. I will keep, thank you for that feedback. I'll keep checking in to see what this looks like. So when we're talking about the similarities and the differences, the two overlap. Is the mouse moving? Can you all see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I can point to things, great. Within this piece, when we talk about the social determinants of health, we're talking about the, okay, let me back up a little bit. What this, what this graphic shows us is how these determinants account for the status of our health overall. The social determinants of health account for forty percent as well, forty percent with the social and economic factors of education, community, discrimination, language, isolation, financial, to financial access to equitable income and so on and so forth. And then also, social determinants of health also accounts for ten percent of your physical environment, housing and transit, air quality and water. Social determinants of health also focuses on clinical care access when we're talking about. But it's not just, do you have access to a hospital? Do you have access to a hospital and what is the quality of that hospital? And what is the level and standard of care that you receive within that hospital? Same thing with your pharmacies and so on and so forth. With the determinants of health, you're just focusing primarily on these health behaviors. Probably half of this chart as it relates to clinical care and then physical environment. So they are very similar and they overlap, but the determinants of health does not focus on the social and economic piece that drives the health outcomes. So, again, it's asking me, do I have a doctor? And I say no. And then we say, well, they're just not going to the doctor versus they're not going to the doctor because they cannot afford it, they don't have access to transportation to get there, or there is medical distrust and they don't want to go to someone who does not understand them culturally. So those are the differences. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's try to go to this next slide. One thing that I learned, because this language is evolving over and over, and what we as public health scientists, psychologists and sociologists did not do a very good job of sharing the language around the social determinants of health. We don't share the updates on how we're talking about this unless you are completely ingrained in that. And as someone who is still doing this work, I'm still learning more and more. And something that came up during this conversation was the differences and nuances and what we actually mean when we talk about the social determinants of health. Majority of the time, people want to focus on action. They want to focus on what is actually changeable and measurable and impactful in their work. So instead of using the phrase social determinants of health interchangeably, which is correct, a lot of people are using the phrase social drivers of health. We saw that when we did a review, a bit of a landscape review, as it relates to what people are saying throughout the state of California. Most people are now using the phrase social drivers of health rather than social determinants of health. Few groups are using the phrase determinants of health, but it just depends on the status of the work that they're doing. I don't think there's a right or wrong, it's about what the priorities are for the district. Any questions about that? One thing that I would note is that for the social drivers of health, I was very drawn to the fact that this aligns more so with your mission statement that you approved yesterday, especially with the emphasis on power, agency and resilience. That resilience piece stood out to me as we were having the discussion yesterday and I wanted to make sure I highlighted that.
Angelica, I think we have a question from Director Delara.
So, I just wanted to, to understand that what you just finished saying right before your last statement, that, that there's a movement to actually move towards using social drivers of health rather than social determinants of health. So are they interchangeable then?
Yes, they are. These two phrases are interchangeable, yes, they are. Because majority of the time, when people say social determinants of health, including the social piece, they are moving towards action. But as research has, you know, come along over the past fifteen years or so and talking to members of the community, when we talk about the social determinants of health and using that word determinants, so many people said it felt like it was fixed, it was predetermined, nothing could be changed. So when we got feedback, when we as in public health scientists and researchers got feedback from the community, there was more emphasis on community empowerment, agency and resilience to shift the phrasing from determinants to drivers. But they are still used interchangeably. That's a very good question, thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay, now, this is where we do the work. So I'm so excited, let's see if we can get back there. Lea, this is where I need you.
All right, I'm here.
Okay. Before we choose which terminology and phrase is best for the district, let's talk about why we should, why should the district integrate health determinants into the strategic plan? We've had this discussion a little bit and it's come up within the conversations that we've had during various board members and board meetings that we've attended. But I would love for us to use the sticky notes and to add our thoughts. Why should, or should not, I should have put should not, the district integrate health determinants into the strategic plan even more than it already has?
We're asking each one of us to answer the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. And the staff, you know, and everybody in the room, right, as we talked to everybody. Staff as well.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, well, I would say that in order to have. Okay, well, I I would say that in order to have a healthy population in Coachella Valley, people need to have enough food on the table and and nutritional needs covered. They need to have healthy air to breathe. They need to have affordable uh housing to live in and that's my first top three. In addition to having access to care.
Yeah, and also in terms of like the access to care with lack of transportation and especially like in now in today's environment with immigration issues and such, you know, being able to have that access to care and also to the language barriers that might occur with uh different providers that are not multilingual, et cetera. So also the ability to have after hour services that um I think those kind of things play into the barriers to access that that our community needs, especially in the underserved areas.
Love it.
When we work to, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh work to like improve equity and reduce disparities overall, more of a
And I would also love to hear why the district should focus on determinants of health over the social determinants of health. Understanding that it's a focus on genetics, the individual behaviors and decisions, more biology, which still has a place in we, when we talk about the context of our lived experiences and our overall health.
I think that we should integrate the social determinants of health into our um strategic plan because there's a lot of things that affect our community and it's not just healthcare. You know, and that way we would be able to focus in on other factors besides the healthcare. And there's just, I mean, there's a lot of inconsistencies in care, right? Not not equitable care or not. And I think that would help us make it more easier to set up our goals.
There's also political decisions that make policy that uh prohibits or isn't, doesn't allow uh to have adequate care. Um, you know, I'm talking about like Planned Parenthood, defunding um food banks, not getting enough food um helping with somewhere.
Policy, not having sufficient housing for our population that is in the community.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the trailer parks out in back of it, housed
For not having adequate water.
No, with no insulation and no air conditioning.
And the water, we had that problem with the
And inadequate water supply or unhealthy water.
And then also along the lines of like the public policy aspect of it, it could also position the district to go seek funding, like state funding or federal funding, um which were aligned and I mean social determinants of health are the key elements when we're talking about, like seeking that, like those funds. So I think that would position us or make us stronger as well.
I love this. Any other thoughts?
I think there's a lot of data that substantiates that the um social determines of health have a lot of impact on one's uh own health. So the data is something that we are looking to uh to make better decisions using data. And so um we already have a lot uh of data already that's taken to the fact that this is necessary. Uh so uh I think it puts us in line with a lot of other credible uh work that's already being done.
I could see incorporating it also like along your, the same lines, like we could be working with school districts, right, um water authorities, other um or cities, right, the county, especially as it ties into our new mission statement, right? Building resilient communities. That's, I think how I see it, that's what's going to tie us together more than just, you know, maybe in the past just working on a hospital or within around a hospital. I think this really does allow us to, you know, like cross over to other sectors.
And focus on those partnerships that we talked about last night, right?
Yeah, that's the point that I wanted to make and look into the strategic partnerships of who out in the community is already doing work around the social determinants of health and how we could partner with them to expand their work. It's not like we're going to go out there and, you know, build housing ourselves.
Right.
You know, for example, like the partnership that we have with Live2Rise that is kind of moving, you know, certain affordable housing through the pipeline to ensure that the community um has access to that affordable housing throughout the Coachella Valley. But same thing with like Fine Food Bank, how we supported them, you know, in in these traveling times where, you know, uh federal benefits are being cut for certain community members to expand, you know, their access to healthy foods that are potentially being cut because they're losing, they're losing their SNAP benefits, et cetera. So looking at those strategic partnerships, who's doing the work out there already and how we could expand their work um and support them to ensure that we are addressing some of those social determinants of health.
I think also um one of the things that comes to mind is the fact that you you're looking long term to be reactive, but you're able to plan for the future. And so you have to take into account community, what is in the community.
Right, so it gives you a long-term view.
And how that community might evolve.
Be a little bit more, I get it.
And and I was thinking, you know, when we were looking at the differences here between uh social determinants of health and determinants of health, I was kind of looking more for the, for the perspective of determinants of health. Because, you know, included in that is behavior, medical care and environmental and physical influence as well as the social and economic components, which the social, that's what social determinants of health are. So, you know, we are you know, we do look at like the environment and the the work that we've been doing around that. And you know, one of our, our, our major um component is providing access to healthcare. So I'm kind of thinking more in broader terms of uh determinants of health with the social determinants of health as a subset of that as was described earlier.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I think it's I think some of it's kind of challenging for us to address some of those non touch type things in a sense of like transportation and those kinds of things. Um, we realize that those are important, but we're going to have to figure out how uh does the healthcare district play a role in those kinds of issues? And if we can figure out ways to do that, I think it's beneficial. But if we're looking at the difference between determinants of health and social determinants of health, that was my thoughts.
Yeah. And I think one of them has a direct impact on individuals' health, which are the determinants of health, and the other one are indirect impacts. So I think, you know, the priority would obviously be those, you know, to Chris's point, the ones that are directly impacting the health of the individual. And then the other ones are more like the supportive infrastructure to make sure that the individual is actually healthy or the community is healthier.
So just a couple of notes to make sure that we're aligned on the differences. When we talk about the social and economic factors that are housed within the definition of determinants of health, it's not including all of the factors that are highlighted through the social determinants of health. So they are deeply separate. The social part of this, of the determinants of health, there is a, I mean, I'm going to grab the presentation layer so we can make sure that we're aligned. The, so can you all see this?
Yep.
Yeah. Just a little bit to the left, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Under the determinants, I have twenty things open on my screen. Under the determinants, remember, the social part is just social support. It's community and culture. It's not including these factors around access, quality in social community, um access, quality, education, and so on and so forth. So I want us to make sure we under, remember the context when we talk about um the social factors within determinants of health. Woo, so many determinants, Laura. Determinants of health under DOH versus the SDOH. I just want us to keep that in mind. Because I want us to make sure that we're staying aligned on where we are. And now I'm going to pull this back up, Leia. I think we're back in this section.
And Angelica, I have a clarifying question. Well, we're talking about either, we're, we're talking in broad terms now, but we're not saying that if, if the focus is on the social determinants of health, we're going to hit every single one.
Absolutely not. No, that, that's going to be the next part of our activity.
Yeah.
We're going to narrow down what it is that we can actually do through the district. And we're going to talk about frameworks that really bring this all together. So we can highlight some of those differences as well.
I know that I know that when we talked about transportation at the APHA meeting, I met a woman from North Carolina who said that her agency provides Uber drivers to, for uh people to get to work who don't have cars. She said that they provide DoorDash uh to bring food to families that couldn't get to the food pantry. I mean, there were just lots of great ideas out there in terms of how social determinants actually affect health. You know, if you can't get to work to make a living, you don't have a paycheck.
There's a lot of healthcare um companies that also offer free transportation, like IHP offers free transportation, either direct, you know, starting to answer, or they offer you a bus pass.
Bus pass.
I know Molina has the same thing. They offer also a transportation. I think that way it would be getting that information out to the public so that they know. You know, because some people, when you get your medical papers or whatever, you just look at them and they go, okay, set them aside, right? You don't really read what's in there. So um I think that would be a way to, to collaborate.
Yeah. Well, you see it firsthand with your job in terms of what people do besides healthcare.
I love this because it's, it's feeding into our next activity. And Leia, I hope we got some of those down because we'll post them in the next section. I thought I was going to have you vote now, but I actually am going to wait. I want us to look at some of these frameworks so that we can have a clear understanding of how all of this works together. And then we'll make a decision around which term we should use. So a couple of things that tends to happen when we talk about social determinants of health and determinants of health, we usually see this image that pops up. It's the image that we've been using for decades that has evolved over time. And usually what they will do is label this image as the social determinants of health. And it's actually not. It is our social ecological model that brings the determinants of health and the social determinants of health together. It helps us identify our level of impact and it helps us measure the work that we're doing, the level of impact that we're actually making. This is why it's important for us to eventually, I don't know if we can get to it tonight because we need to have our community engagement sessions. We need to gather more information before we can fully choose a framework. But I want us to understand that eventually we will get to a place of choosing a framework that brings all of these pieces together. Another example of a framework and model that a lot of people that I've, I'm sure you all have seen at some point, um especially in California, is this model. It talks about the different layers as it relates to the determinants of health at the individual level and the social determinants of health and all of those factors. And how you have a healthy society, a healthy environment, a healthy community, which leads to healthy people. It directly impacts people at different levels and multiple factors that are at play. How many of you have actually seen this model and framework?
Big hands went up, Angelica.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. And even this one, it's actually become one of my favorites because it can get really expensive, right? It turns into us looking at where is the impact that we want to make? Is it political? Is it through policy and politics? Is it upstream? Is it downstream? Is it around the social inequities that impacts our health, the institutions that are at play, our overall living conditions and the advocacy work? Risk behaviors and decisions? Things that can be changed within a local clinic or hospital? Is it um communicable disease? I am a public health scientist. What I did not mention is I am the former chief health officer of Atlanta and I led the pandemic response team for my home city. So all of these factors come into play when I think about the work that I've done and continue to do. And I love this because it also highlights ways for us to measure the impact of the work that the district could lead and continues to lead. So when we talk about the social determinants of health, when we talk about the determinants health in these frameworks that brings this model together and how we will measure our impact, we can integrate all of it into one space when we choose a framework eventually. Any questions about these frameworks before we move on?
Yes, we have one from Donna.
Okay.
Um, it's not really a question, but I like this one as well because I could see this as a true collective impact model that we look at where we can fit in as a district, as a healthcare district and who else, other partners outside of the healthcare district, then could pick one or two or three or whatever things and say, okay, I'm going to work on social inequities. We are going to work on disease and injury and maybe risk behaviors. Live2Rise is going to work on living conditions or the cities are going to work on the housing and those kind of issues. It's essentially a huge collective impact model.
And that is not to say that there, it's not going to be overlaps.
Right, oh, exactly right.
There, there always will.
You're supporting each other.
But you're understanding how to think of it as an ecosystem.
But I
It also goes to the resilient communities, you know, outcome. Everybody's got, everybody's got a voice and everybody's got a piece.
And everybody's got a role.
Absolutely.
Standing at the center is the individual of the community.
Welcome, Dr. Longston. We're just discussing the ecological models
I see that.
Of the end framework.
Yeah.
Of social determinants of health.
Thank you.
How, how is this working in the Bay Area? I mean, is this, is this a framework that they adopted when and how long ago and?
Oh, yeah, this, this, this framework was introduced at least ten years ago. And I remember the various programs, people have used it for collaborative, collaboratives, people have used it to uh ramp up their strategic plans and their approach. And they've also used it to identify what they cannot prioritize, what they cannot do. It was like, hey, these are factors that are under this particular upstream component. That is really not our priority, but we have partners who can do it. What I want us to do in the next phase of our um conversation is getting to this next section. Leia, this is where I'll need your help again.
Yep.
This next section, we want to do two things. We want to decide which term is most appropriate. That's the first thing. And the second thing that we're going to do, Leia, is this second activity of brainstorming how we can inter interweave the determinants of health or the social determinants of health principles into factors like the strategic pillars, the funding, the partnerships. Basically, the things that you all started to do, which I was so excited, but we're not there yet. Y'all, hold on to those ideas. But next I want us to decide where are we as it relates to choosing which term we want to use as we move forward? Because I want us to make sure that we're all aligned as it relates to the strategic plan.
So again, Angelica, as we think about this, can you in like one or two lines tell us?
Yep.
What are the diff, what's the difference that we should keep in mind?
Yes.
Social determinants of health and determinants of
So with the social determinants of health, we're talking about the context of someone's experience and what impacts their decision when they make a decision about their health. So where they live, their equitable access to pay, racism, discrimination, gender-based discrimination in various forms. We're talking about um, it, level of education access, so on and so on and so forth. With the determinants of health, we're talking about individual decisions that a person makes every day about their health. We're also talking about their social support in their community in which they live in and how they view themselves in that community. And then we're also talking about where they live, how where they're, how where they live impacts their health. So determinants of health is what's happening in that moment. Social determinants of health is the context of what's happening in that moment. Everything that's surrounding that moment.
And everything that's led up to it.
And everything that's led up to it. Cause yes, historical context influences that as well. Yep. Thank you, Ori.
Can we add social drivers of health on that? Or is that just part of the left?
It's, it's, I, it's interchangeable for um, social determinants of health, but I can add it. This is a, an image of my presentation, so I can, let's pretend like I can write that in. Can we put that in there, Lea?
Turn over it.
Private, thank you.
Me, me personally, I like to think that the healthcare district going into the future will have, have a big picture, a grand picture of the, of the Coachella Valley and what steps, what, what programs, what issues that we can tackle that will have the maximum impact on, for instance, correcting the inequities of care in the valley. So I think that the only thing that will do that is the social aspects of that. You know, that may be too big a piece to bite off, but I think that it's, it's worth looking at. What are your thinking?
I think, I think social determinants of health is better because it does give us a bright, a bigger picture, right? A thing that we can do.
Where determinants of health will be just set to one, to one way.
Right.
I, I'm seeing it the reverse. I thought I was understanding the determinants of health was broader. Social determinants of health are a subset of determinants of health.
That is my understanding.
Really? I thought, I thought we just said earlier that social determinants of health were a subset of determinants of health.
No, I think that's because of social driver.
Right. Angelica, do you wanna repeat the social definition under determinants of health? Cause I think there's, that might be helpful in terms of clarifying. Gotcha. I don't wanna move this, so how, well, I'm presenting, so I guess I will have to because I wanna make sure that I bring it back up. So here are the differences. Thank you, Miro. Can you all see that?
A little bit bigger, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, that works.
Awesome. So with the differences, we're talking about, I think the, I think what gets confusing is the piece when we say for this, the determinants of health, there's a factor around social. And what social really means is your position within society, not necessarily the social determinants of health, but your position, your social class within side, within the society. So determinants of health is around your income, your social status. That's just a social class, education, physical environment. Do you have safe water, healthy workplaces? Social support is not about the social determinants of health. It's the community and culture as well as genetics, health services and sex. Differences in how illness and disease can manifest based on sex. Not, not to be confused with gender, but male and female. Um, with the social determinants of health, I'm gonna sip a little tea. With the social determinants of health, we're talking about factors that influence economic stability. Do you have consistent income? When we talk about educational access and quality, it's the differences in how we're able to measure that and the level of educational access and quality. Same thing with healthcare. Neighborhood and built environment are very similar. When we talk about physical environment, neighborhood and built environment expands beyond your community, but the overall city, even the state and the policies that impact your neighborhood and your experience in your neighborhood. And last but not least, the factor that is very similar is the social and community context. That's where it overlaps a little bit as it relates to the determinants of health.
I'm uh, interested in hearing, I don't wanna interrupt your eating, but Dr. Longston, you're um, um, you haven't had a chance to comment on what you think on, on the two, the two areas that we're looking at and being asked to, to decide which one we or to be integrated in our strategic plan. Could you share?
Yeah, I can comment on this. I think both of these are important things to address and, and more or less, I think to recognize that there are disparities in care and some of it is self-driven, some of it is economically driven. Some of it is driven by genetics, by your heritage, uh, by how you were brought up. And so I think these are important factors to definitely have weigh in and to be considered as we decide to make big changes, you know? Sometimes I think you can get very narrowly focused into one small group trying to eliminate some small group of people's um, inequities, if you will. Their inequality, I guess, that comes up based on some of the factors you mentioned here. I wanna make sure that we address those groups, but I also wanna make sure we look at the group, the whole of who lives in the Coachella Valley and who we represent as a whole and make sure everybody's encompassed into that. Cause we care about every valley resident. Yeah, does that make sense? Does that clarify? Maybe not. I think these are both very important points, but I think um, we were sitting here debating about what's the difference between the two are. And yes, there are important factors that are each that we need to address. And it should be a part of it, but was the goal of this to be a primary main focus of what we're trying to? I may have missed it at the beginning.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, the goal of this session is to make sure that we're all aligned on what the priorities are as it relates to the social determinants of health or the determinants of health. Throughout our discovery phase, the theme around health determinants came up through the board meetings, through one-on-one discussions. And we wanted, but yet we found that different groups were using different terminologies. Sometimes we meant the same thing, sometimes we meant something different. So as we figure out how we want to measure the impact of our work through the strategic plan, we need to decide if we're focusing on the, the social, the social determinants of health, the determinants of health, or doing a mixture of both. When you walked in, we were talking about a framework that lays out the overall impact of what could be done and what has been done through other districts and health departments. And they integrated a little bit of both. What I want us to remember is that when it comes to the social determinants of health, we're not just focusing on one group. The factors of social determinants of health impacts the health of everyone because as a community, we're all interconnected and we're only as strong as the group that has um, most limited access to resources because they are connected to us. So I just want us to keep some of that in mind as we continue to evolve the conversation. I also want us to remember, we don't have to choose one as it relates to the framework, but we do have to choose one as it relates to the terminology that we want to use.
Your thoughts?
I mean, what, I, I wanna hear the board. I mean, I, I'm a little, I guess I don't fully understand the difference between the two. I know you guys are explaining it. We, I don't use that terminology a lot. I hear it a lot.
Yeah.
I don't know what, what, I mean, you guys, I know Greg Rodriguez talks about this a lot and he probably works more.
I think Greg has his hand raised, but I'm not sure I'll let the board handle that.
I can hear from Greg if he's here, but, because he, he talks about this a lot more than I do from the public health sector. You know, I talk about it from the, in healthcare. I mean, we, we do look at these things, do impact our decisions on patients and healthcare. I guess I'd like to hear. I, I, I'm a little confused.
I know how many of you are in the public, but if you do open it up to Greg, I would suggest to open it up to all the members of the public that are, okay, so.
Yes.
Oh, I got you.
Thank you, Larry.
Does, does any members of the public wish to make a comment? Greg?
Yeah, so I, I will make a comment and um, my, my preference is social determinants of health because especially if you look at the mission statement about resilient communities. Um, if you look at the things we funded in the past, if you really do look at the long-term vision of what the district wants to accomplish, to me, that's a more encompassing term. Additionally, I, to be honest with you and all the healthcare, you know, I sit on F Q boards um, through our public health department, um, through county efforts around integrated service. It's all social determinants of health. That's what F Qs use. That's again, what the county uses. And I think in the healthcare industry and especially, and then the outside peripheral things like the housing and food, um, that, that to me, the social determinants of health um, is a better term to use. I, to be honest with you, before tonight, I had never heard of determinants of health.
That's why, I think that's kinda where my confusion was coming into a little bit, Greg. Uh, just trying to distinguish between the two. When it comes to like, sorry, like, when it comes to like groups that are included in exclusion, I mean, I wanna make sure nobody's being excluded from. I, I don't know what the fuck is the social determinants of health. Like, does that exclude certain portions of our population, include them? Like, what, what does that do for us? I, I really don't understand fully. Open to get some more clarity. And maybe you guys who work more in the sector have more understanding of what that really means. And like, does that change our primary focus group? Does that include everybody in the, in the valley? Like, what, what does that do for us when we focus? Maybe Donna, you can share on it. Maybe you work in the space too. Like what, I don't do public health, so what does that mean for us? How does that change our vision of what we're focused on based on even what we talked about last, yesterday?
Absolutely. So I am a public health scientist. I've been doing it for 20 years. I've published over 30 peer-reviewed studies on equitable access to care. So this is something that I truly specialize in. One thing that is important for us to highlight is that it does not change the context of our populations. What it does do is help us prioritize what it is that we're focusing on and how do we measure the impact of our work? So when we talk about the social determinants of health, we aren't just prioritizing. Populations are only prioritized if an organization chooses to only prioritize that population. Social determinants of health gives us a framework to measure the impact of our work. That's truly what it is. The difference is, when we talk about the determinants of health, is how this work has evolved over time. It's the phrasing and the way we thought about the research. It shifted from looking at this person chooses not to go to the doctor or this person chooses not to eat a vegetable to maybe they don't have access to a garden or maybe they live too far from their doctor. So what we're seeing here on the screen, and it might still be a little too small. I just remembered to make it a little bit bigger, is the influence and context of how we've evolved and how we've thought about equitable health and access to care over time. So those are the major differences. I understand your concerns completely, especially without that full context. But the populations are chosen by the organization and how we measure the impact of the work is decided by the framing that we choose, which is.
I can give maybe an example. Angelica, this is from our previous work. In your, in your fair city, um, that I think, but correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not the expert here, you are. But that, that exemplifies what I think is the difference between the two on the ground when, when, you know, when things get real. Pandemic hits, we see a massive um, resistance to receiving vaccines, specifically on part of black population, African-American population, right? Across the country. We're, let's take the city of Atlanta where Angelica was the chief health officer. The city tried to do everything and anything that it could to encourage black populations to take the vaccine. So they did advertisement on bus stops and they did commercials on TV and commercials on the radio. And they did one commercial with a black, a white doctor. And then they were like, okay, well, maybe we need a black doctor. Okay, so they did a commercial with a black doctor and that didn't work. So it's like, okay, maybe we need a female doctor. So they did a female doctor and maybe she needs to be in uniform, when she doesn't need to be in uniform. And all of those things didn't matter until the city recognized that there's a cardinal component to why the population is resisting vaccines. Can anyone guess what that is? Just.
What's up? The trials. The trials.
Experiment, yes. The con, the con, historical and contextual factors that influences vaccine utilization in different groups.
People were injected with disease in the fifty, you know, in the fifties in that region. Right? That's the reality, right? Until the city copes with that and until the city recognizes that and starts working with community leaders to address that and tackle that, it doesn't matter what commercial you put on and at what time of the day and all of those things like that. To me, Angelica, correct me if I'm wrong, but to me, that is a cardinal difference between the two approaches.
Yes, yes. I, it, it, it aligns with how you would need to frame the work that you are doing. But that, and that would be adjusted and adapted for whatever group you are working with. So earlier today, we talked about differences based on regions and zones and how we would need to partner with different groups to ensure that we are getting representative um, feedback from residents. How do we engage? Who do we engage? How would that differ from zone one to zone two and this, this region compared to that region? The social determinants of health gives us context around how we should do that. But it doesn't make us choose which group we are trying to prioritize. That is something completely separate. Does that make sense?
I mean, what was your solution to the treatment of COVID and vaccination of COVID, knowing that? So I hear that. What was, you ran the COVID, what, what do you do to address that?
So what we did was work with community partners that were deeply connected with black communities throughout of South Atlanta. And we paid those community partners to implement the vaccine and educate people. What I decided to do was kinda throw out our social media work. I threw out the stuff that we were doing on the internet. We got back to boots-on-the-ground initiatives and opportunities. And we went door to door and knocked on the door and had conversations. That was the only way we were able to vaccine people after we did that for about a week or two. And then we set up COVID-19 sites within the community. So we increased access, built partnerships and relationships, and then we educated people by going door to door. That is what gave us the ability to vaccine people in Atlanta.
And I'll just add to that, the most effective mechanism nationwide in terms of increasing vaccination rates amongst vaccine hesitancy prone populations? Anybody can guess?
Churches.
From church. There we go.
Yeah.
Religious churches, mosques, synagogues.
So I, I was one of the ones that answered that question. I don't understand what you're asking.
Thank you, yes.
So this, this um, time that we spent on this, it has been very helpful. I had never heard the term uh, determinants of health before. Uh, in the circles, I travel in the same circles that, that Greg travels in. And so it, this has been very helpful. Uh, with all of this information and uh, uh, just knowing uh, some of the discussions we've had about what we wanna do and the work that we wanna continue, I think the social determinants of health fits better.
Are, are we in agreement? Are we ready to move on?
Seventy percent of us.
So we're selecting social. So we're selecting social determinants. Yeah, thanks for the sense.
Do we have?
Yeah.
All right. I feel good. We've accomplished the the greatest task. Okay. Thank you all for that. I I genuinely appreciate the feedback and the thoughts and the concerns. Because I think majority of the time folks don't get to share, you know, those questions that comes up. So the next activity that I want us to do is kind of get back to some of the brainstorming that we were doing. Leia, can you see where I am? Okay, I see you. All right, Leia. I know you got my back out there.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Probably start this, because it has to be one or the other.
Well, she said both. You could do both. She said that earlier.
We don't have a difference that we just we always ever talked about a social determines health.
And you renew it determinants of health work. Happily of times. It's or been percolating.
I considered the alternative. I considered A, B, or C as a combo. And I thought that what she had offered as as an alternative, but I think the social determinants is one that is all encompassing and so and based on the comments that I heard from every from all the board members and from the team. I think the only one that that I was really considering what you're saying, Chris, and I was thinking about, you know, yes, can we do it all? And and I think, you know, I want to change the world and my world is the Coachella Valley. That's where I'm starting at. So I would like to start with the the all encompassing and then from there deal with how do we do that? So but I did consider what you said about that really what's realistic about, you know, I I think that's what made me lean towards maybe a combination, but I think based on the comments that I've heard from everybody in the room, it seemed like there's more consensus to move in social determinants of health.
And I want us to remember, thank you so much for that feedback. I want us to remember that right now we're just making sure we're aligned on the language and what we mean when we talk about the language. So it sounds like we've aligned on the social determinants of health with the understanding that when we choose the framework to measure our impact, we also want to highlight some individual factors. And that's where we can bring the two together, but we just need to be consistent around the language that we're using. So so just just to confirm, have we aligned on the social determinants of health?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
I think you have a thumbs up, Angelica.
Yay. Okay, okay, wonderful. So we have selected our standardized phrasing. Leia, can we just note that we're choosing this as our main terminology, but within our framework, we want some overlap to highlight some of the individual factors that we've discussed today. All right. So earlier in our conversation, and it started already when we were talking about our definitions, we were talking about, you know, what, why the district should focus on health determinants? Why should it even be included in a strategic plan? What are the factors that are impacting the overall health of residents of the Coachella Valley? Some of the things that I want you to brainstorm now, you already started talking about it. You started talking about funding. You started talking about the partnerships that could come out of this, how it could be integrated into the strategic pillars. We highlighted some of the evaluation focuses that came out of the framework. I think it was Donna that highlighted the fact that she really liked that overall expanded framework and opportunities for the district to integrate certain partnerships and services and so on and so forth. And then we also, I also want us to talk about community centered approaches. How can we integrate the social determinants of health into the strategic plan? This is our chance to daydream and expand on what we can do with the understanding that we cannot do it all. So when we're done with this, we have to choose some priorities. Where would you like to begin? We can choose any of these five areas. Should we start with partnerships?
What are our choices?
We've already discussed like some of the partnerships. So it would be like the local healthcare infrastructure, desert care network, Eisenhower, the federally qualified health centers. Our elected officials, that RUHS, public health environment, just RUHS.
Now she's writing everything down.
It's also being recorded.
It's also being recorded for sure.
All good.
Yes. And when we think about this, we're thinking about how do we ensure that we're integrating the social determinants of health in our work? How are we thinking outside of the box and who we should be or could be partnering with? Or who do we need to ensure that we never lose as a partner?
I think school districts are a big, huge partner. I think, you know, schools tend to be like the cornerstone of many communities. And there you could target staff, students, their family. And they're typically a trusted messenger. There's, you know, there's some power there with partnering with the school districts.
I would suggest thinking about academic institutions. I mean, that came up yesterday, research organizations, especially if we want to head towards becoming a hub of knowledge and information and data.
I mean, I think COD is a big partner, you know.
And CSU.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of nurse trainings. There's definitely partnerships there. I like the schools. I also think you need to really partner with the cities too. You know, I don't think we get enough city officials and people here listening to what we're working on. You know, with the amount of impact we have on their communities, you know, Linda comes from La Quinta, that's about it. You know, it'd be nice to involve the nine different kind of city centers, you know, I think that also helps to really understand because each one of those communities are are pretty distinct, you know, people that live there and to what the needs are for their healthcare. They are distinct for sure.
That represent all night cities.
Yeah, but it makes to see the specific, you know, officials, the city council. I think the schools, the school board, you know, having some of them involved.
Other special districts?
Yeah, yeah.
Also, local, other local foundations. I know the Clinton Foundation at one time had a a meeting that included all the local foundations, you know, like Burger and all of them together and we talked about how how we could collaborate.
Couple of big foundations out here.
So with like maybe legislators?
Yeah, for sure. For sure, state in US.
What about what we call federated organizations, right? So national organizations that have local branches, I think. ARP's of the world, Save the Children of the World. What about those?
Maybe I think I're I think I would rather get one step closer to local actual people locally. I mean, I those organizations are great, but I think you know, trying to get the local community leaders involved.
A lot of times those organizations actually serve as additional funders. Sure. So for example, ARP, in addition to distributing its own activities on the ground, actually sponsors additional organizations, right? So the cumulative power of funding of local organizations can
can be. Shiners, the whatever the other, there's a couple of little like small groups that do healthcare. There's the Lions, you know, there's all those little lodges or whatever that.
Social service groups.
Yeah, that are out there that are nonprofit publicly funded, you know, kind of self funded, but they're have a big impact.
Another group we could add on there would be like the health plans, like the Melina, the IHPs. That manage a lot of the Medicare medical dollars for for the region.
He said health plans.
Health plans. What about the big mall subset? What about insurance companies, health insurance companies? Do they have a role to play? I don't, I'm not leading the witness. I'm genuinely asking, do they have a role to play?
Insurance.
Insurance, really? I mean, I mean, you can. I mean, I think if you want to meet some of the or indigenous population, I think he mentioned a couple of the plans, like IHP and Melina are coverage plans. They don't always offer extensive coverage. I mean, things that we have to do to even see somebody with IHP is challenging, you know, to put in surgery and to get it done. It's there aren't a lot. So yes, I think reaching out to them and understanding what they are, the mobile health clinic, all that stuff kind of ties together because it does meet a certain part of our community.
I would like for us to add either under like local government, it's tribal nations. And local physician groups, desert physicians, medical group.
There's a lot of small groups too that.
Small groups out there. Would health insurance be a factor right now with all the would health insurance be important factor right now with all the stuff that's going on with the trying to sign up people because the Affordable Care Act, the needs are going up and.
I I don't know. It was a genuine question, just thinking about the eccentric circles of potentials.
Definitely.
In relationships that the organization can.
So have cultivate a partnership.
What can we get? Honestly, honestly, what can we get out of them?
And what can the district truly influence?
I mean, we've already done a couple of partnerships with IHP that have helped with some of our initiatives in the valley. But I think that it's also important to get a hold of them because if or to create a contact with them because if patients are lacking transportation to their doctor's appointment. And we can't provide that service and we know that IHP can, then we would use them or Melina. I know. I know a lot of the health plans have transportation, you know, transportation arrangements for their patients.
I mean, it's definitely a factor in getting healthcare is understanding your health insurance plan, but part of what we also do, there's a reason why we do mobile clinics because the current health plans don't make it easy for people to get care. You can get medicated, doesn't mean you can get medications. Doesn't mean you can get in to see the doctor in the next three to six months. So I think more or less it's an informative partnership to understand where their limitations are. And and that includes people that have Kaiser insurance out here, which is growing tremendously. Those are people that have Digital Oasis Insurance, another HMO. People have, you know, sometimes Aetna and United Healthcare are worse than all the other ones we've mentioned in terms of getting access. So I think it's really understanding what the breakdown is of that, how that affects their ability to access care and then where do we fill in the gaps?
How about the private sector, like local businesses?
Like employers, chambers of commerce, restaurant associations, hotel associations.
We have a large resort community too. I talked about HOAs earlier and part of it's part of our outreach to partner with HOAs.
Another that came up today, in examples where there's a social impact corporate, social impact arm of a corporation involved. What was the the vision? A vision to learn that we met today, they get all their glasses from Warby Parker. Is that a relationship that you think should stay at the level of the organization that's on the ground or is that a relationship that you see yourself having a role as a larger umbrella organization?
Besides funding.
I'm sorry.
Besides giving them grant dollars?
Yeah, for example, establishing those relationships to start with, right? Sometimes organization of three to five people is going to have a really hard time reaching out, getting on their radar, you know, putting together the right material, putting to you knowing how to give an approach in an organization like Warby Parker. Right? Is that a role that foundation or could could help with, not maybe own, but help with and that falls into the types of partnerships that you guys either enable, facilitate or own.
We've done that connecting wise, I mean, like with the mobile clinic with C V Pharmacy, I mean. Vaccine link.
Part of the trouble that we, the trouble that we've had though is the fact that being a special district that we have to have limitations that sometimes we can't facilitate or reach out, you know, in as an an easy manner as you had. If you have a problem, you want to solve it and you offer dollars to this organization because you know that that it works. But we have those limitations.
Yeah, we really changed that.
I think that gets to the fact that we can't solve all of the problems through this plan, but there are things that we can lay out and what part of what I heard with what Ori's I think that was Ori, Ori's question really leaned into not only partnerships but funding. So how can we, when we think about the funding mechanisms and this might already be embedded? How are we highlighting, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry, y'all. How are we highlighting the social determinants of health into the funding streams and funding mechanisms that come through the district? Some examples are priority funding, intentional funds that go toward specific initiatives and groups and opportunities and services.
And I think, you know.
I think she had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then you and then me.
No, I was just gonna say that don't we do that already through CB Hip or Connect Aino? That we provide those services for, I mean, there's all kinds of services that patients can go on there and see affecting different things, right? Like housing, like medical and everything else.
Oh, no, I think with the funding, I think, you know, we you know, I think the a great example of that is the RFPs that have been developed. I think those are very strategic focused, you know, funding streams.
Initiative process.
Yeah, that it has been, have been yielding amazing results.
So I was just confused. Are we still in partnerships? Are we moving on to the next, the next box?
We're moving to the next box and we don't have to stick with one section. We can flow between each of these as the ideas come up.
I like just giving one at a time that way I don't get confused. I get confused.
We're focused on funding right now. So we highlighted RFPs. I think someone else mentioned initiatives that you were already doing, but I couldn't quite hear what they said.
Just our our initiative processes that we have in place.
Are we envisioning ourselves changing how we're currently funding? Projects, I feel like we do a very good job in doing RFPs. We have a good grant process. I mean, what?
I don't think the focus is on changing it. It might be just, are we doing a great job now? Is there anything that we want to change? Do we want to keep that the same?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. And if you want to keep it the same, then that means we can move on to the next section.
I just want to hear from the board, what you think about our current funding. I know Carol, you brought up some things a few months ago about concerns you have about things that were denied. What what does the board think about how we're currently funding things?
And we need to change the legislation.
I think it works for the amount of money that we've been doing, but now that we're going to have new funding and bigger dollars, I think we need to explore other ways to do it, to look at funding projects that are going to be multi year, multi million dollars projects and that are bigger scope projects. And and those are are a little bit difficult because of the funding restrictions that we have. I don't know how we can do that, but I'm sure there's ways that our CEO is going to to come up with. But I think what we have done at the level, the the scope that we've had has worked fine. But there's definitely, we can't do what we're, the ideas that I've heard around this table. It cannot be done just by the way we've been doing business. It just seems to be a lot more that we have to be figuring out how to how to come up with some initiatives, some some really big projects that are beyond that RFP process.
And maybe some investment strategies that can use legally job that will.
I was just looking at the guidelines for local agency investment guidelines for 2025. And it's a I I think it's like a hundred and forty six pages, but you know, I'll certainly share that with staff and we can try to summarize it a little bit. But that that's been on my mind since last night, Carol. Thank you.
Chris?
But I I think in terms of two, we have better opportunity now with the upcoming lease in 2027. And we think in terms of those defined areas that are more underserved that allow us to do more with real estate options.
with real estate options and being able to fund our own, um, clinics, urgent cares, medical office buildings. And be able to work with other organizations in those areas.
Right.
To expand health and that's going to require some substantial amounts of, yeah, all our resources a, as well as partnerships.
And under partnerships, we should include our local hospitals that.
Right.
Access to funds.
I think it's like the first one, right? The healthcare.
I think you brought up the point I was going to drive home, Chris. I think what we're currently funding is great and we're funding others initiatives, which is very important to do as well. But I think what I think about the changes in what we're currently doing, the one thing that would be different is that we have the opportunity to be in a driver's seat of bigger initiatives. And I think what I wanted to hear from the board is are you envisioning our board being in that? And I'll bring it up yesterday, the driver's seat because it's different when you are investing in somebody else's initiative. You're kind of giving over the control, giving money and you don't, you get some say so, but you don't get to specifically, um, designate how this is going to be executed versus being in the driver's seat, which is my preference, clearly what I do for a living. It's clear, I always like to be in the driver's seat, but, but I think because of, you know, after getting to know everybody here on the board and the team, I, I think the way we view what needs to happen in the valley is different than lots of our partners, we even listen to me. We all align on a lot of the same vision on where the need is and how to meet it. We're going to be able to do that. But I think it's going to require us to fund some of our own initiatives versus just funding others initiatives. That's a part of it for sure and that won't go away. But you have the opportunity to fund our own initiatives that may in turn allow us the future and then perpetually continue to fund others initiatives.
So what does that, what's that? I have a question on this. What does that look like on the ground? So for example, today, when we were at Galilee, we're like, hey, stream big, right? Like what's the one thing that you would love to see in Mecca? Immediately, three seconds, six people around me, we're like hospital. Right? The nearest hospital for that is twenty-five minutes in, right? But that's it. That's their most urgent.
So it would be a freestanding ER and we've already.
So what does that look like for the, for this organization? Does that mean that we go, we find the doctors, we find the facility, we find the real estate, we pay the lease, we correct?
Good question. So I think where we play a role in that is one of the hardest things for anything to start with is capital management and it's expense management. But if you can, you can say, hey, you bring the labor, you bring the management, we'll own the building, which we can do, right? We can lease it back to you like we currently do at a rate that makes it attractive to build a business in Mecca, which can be challenging. We know the population is going to grow there, but it might not be sustainable now, but this is where you bring in your other partners and say, hey, what's the growth look like in Mecca? And Greg would tell us probably, you know, what the exponential growth is going to be in the Mecca area. He said, all right, we know in the next seven years, we need to put something there, so we'll start working on it now. And in seven years, it'll be self-sustaining, meaning they should be able to cover what a full lease would be. But until that point, we have the ability to pretty much, you know, if we own it, there's different tax strategies, right? Because we're a public entity. So there's a lot of things that factor in that wouldn't allow maybe a corporate or a capital-driven business to go in there and do it that we could do. And it's good for our taxpayers because as we've learned, the sale of the hospital has returned to our taxpayers a very large amount of money that now allows us to go and impact their community. So if we can continue to do that over and over and over again, and the vehicle that we're allowed to do that in as a public agency is real estate, that's how we do it.
Yeah, but as we have, as we start talking about it, and when you said that, when you were leading up to what, what was the response? I thought to myself, he's going to say hospital. Because that is what I, I totally believe is what's necessary. And when you're thinking about twenty years out, you have to start sometime. But I do not believe that this, um, board has the ability to do it all on its own. And there's a lot of things that we have a lot of needs. We have, uh, you know, during our, um, our community meetings, we heard from Desert Hot Springs, they want this from, um, from Eastern Coachella Valley, we need this. So as, but, but as we, uh, and we know what the needs are out there and you're right, that a, a hospital out there would definitely, uh, bring up some, some, um, housing out there, some opportunities and really make a difference because everything is just kind of on a hold right now because of lack of infrastructure.
Provide housing.
So.
Who can invest in housing projects?
And this is what, as, as I'm just kind of leading to this very end, so I could give others a chance to talk, is that knowing as many needs as we have, there's just no way that we can do things on our own. That we can do the, the, the big things with partnerships. With partnerships and if it's a matter of us planning, uh, the, the future of, of the hospital in the Eastern Coachella Valley, that's going to be a twenty-year plan, what is it that we're going to need to do to do that? Um, but it's not going to just be us. We, I can't envision us actually doing everything that you just said. I think we can be the, the springboard and be a partner to it because we have so many other needs that we have to consider.
You can't build a hospital without the cities, for example, and the local municipalities.
Or the state.
But then also, and then also being realistic, we're working on a five-year plan, right? As well, like you said. We can get started, but that's something.
But it has to be a twenty-year plan and what do we, can we do in five years?
Or set the stage for it.
Right. If you want a hospital, you have an FQHC right around the corner from them that is.
It's not the same.
I know it's not the same, Liddy, but it's something that we can, we can expand upon that.
There's a partnership opportunity, right?
Stronger so that they have access to healthcare that may be triaged so they don't.
That's a short-term plan. The long-term plan is the hospital.
I'm just saying currently, there is an FQHC right around the corner of being underutilized.
Yeah, I was just taking hospital as an example.
I tried to do the word underutilized, but.
Call, talk to Galilee and they'd say it is.
I, I serve on the intercare wards and I see what the utilization is. So yeah, that's why I say I don't agree with that.
I know that, I mean, in terms of our ability to fund the big projects, um, as a governmental entity, we have the bonds. In my previous healthcare district, we built two beautiful, like, innocent medical office buildings with, with the use of bonds. And it was hardly any capital at all because of the self-sustaining and it grew in value for our investment as well.
Yep. And I think, you know, the biggest needs we have now, I think that can be addressed in a five-year window. I think a hospital in Mecca is great. I think it's probably outside the five-year window, like you said. But there's no pediatric care here. If you have a kid and you try to get a pediatrician, I mean, there aren't. And that's because investing in pediatrics from a hospital standpoint isn't attractive unless you have a large pediatric hospital that can do the surgeries that actually turn the revenue. So investing in that makes a huge impact. If you have a kid who has chemo, you can't even get infusions here for a child. You have to drive them in sixty miles to loan. That's ridiculous with the amount of children we have here. We should be able to do that. And that's something that we could open and start and partner with somebody to come in and operate. We're not going to operate these things. It's not, it's not feasible for us to ever probably operate a hospital or a medical facility, but to oversee them, we don't operate their mobile clinics, but we oversee them. We have a partnership with another healthcare group that comes in and does that. We organize and coordinate and we own the, the mobile units, so it makes it viable for somebody else to come in and fill that role. You know, senior housing is a huge problem. Have an elderly, you know, family member and you can't take care of them. You need to put them somewhere. Good luck finding a place that offers good senior care for our.
Especially if you're low income. But, uh, one thing I want to add in the hospital thing before we move on from the hospital thing. If we, if the board decides that that is really one of the key things that we're going to look at and you really start, uh, uh, coming up with a plan, even not only, I don't think we, you just focus on, on how do we build in the partnerships that we bring together to do this, but also how do you sustain it? So you have to then start talking to the county. Right now they're not freeing up any of their tax dollars. But if we were to do something like that, then there, that has to be part of it. Is that the, the incremental, uh, property values that are going, uh, to go up because of that importance, uh, uh, services being provided, that is, would then, um, be, I think, the, um, the, the incentive uh, for, for us to be able to do that is that there is funding that has to come. I know you have been saying this over and over again, how unfair it was that, that we have to, uh, expand and not have the tax dollars to go with it. Uh, and so I think that's a key thing as well.
I also appreciate that, that we are going to be focusing on social determinants of health because I can think of like, um, an apartment complex. If they're asking for state funding to develop, one of the things, uh, for them or for the project to be competitive, it has to have certain elements in healthcare as one of them, right? It's either having, um, like a clinic within their own site or walking distance. And so I also see other opportunities. Um, sometimes we are in like, what's it called? Like a vicious cycle where like we want to develop, but we can't, right? Or why? Because it doesn't make sense because of the population? How come people don't live there? It's like, well, they need housing and, but they can't get approved for a housing project because they're lacking certain elements that I think will be able to incorporate it and help. And so I think that in itself, or being able to inject into that cycle, we'll start breaking some of those barriers and then we'll start seeing development. When we talk about development in the medically underserved, and when we talk about maybe opening, opening up a clinic on the north side of the freeway or opening up a clinic in the Eastern Coachella Valley, realistically, like we don't even have the capacity, like there's no like electricity, like our.
So you get to my next point, yes.
Right. And so, and so I think, I love that we're doing this, right? And, and the fact that we're in this moment, thinking about these things about the future, it's because we do have to be realistic about what we can and cannot do. And some of these things are just a little like way out there and we just can't, it's not the right moment, but I think that this is a good opportunity for us to start building, right? That framework or taking us there and especially as we talk or think about the next ten years, twenty years, because realistically, some of these things will not be built. And there's just no capacity to do so. There's a need. And, um, I mean, just thinking about the city of India, it's, um, the city, one of the, like the cities in California with the highest like young population, if you look it up, and it's only growing. And also the Eastern Coachella Valley, so that need is going to be there and it's exponential, like exponentially growing. And so how do we meet them right at the right moment? And I think that's.
I think that's so critical, what you just said. I think it's so important that the role, that, that, the, the magic of a good strategy is not to solve all the problems that exist right in front of us, right? It's to map all the challenges that we have, all the needs that we can see, all the tools that we have in our toolbox and start matching up between them so that we can advance towards making, chipping away at it. Right? Towards chipping away. None of these problems can be solved in a year or two. Let's, let's be honest, we're very few.
All with our money.
Exactly. The thing that I would offer, um, that organizations always forget when they talk about budgets is investing in themselves in their own capacity. So I would just, if I were you guys, I would think about putting another purple note there that one investment needs to happen in the organization itself and its capacity, resources, tools, uh, infrastructure to enable all this.
Can you make it bigger so we can see what the purple boxes say? So far what you have?
And if I may add, um, two things. One, uh, with relation to Director Barazza is that, you know, we can't do it all and you've mentioned that too, but if we're looking at, you know, the grander scheme of how the population growth will continue more east, et cetera. I think there's partnership relationships that we can develop with cities and developers, et cetera, that are looking at expanding housing and, um, you know, retail and grocery stores and all of that type of thing. And incorporate into those areas what we can do with clinical services, et cetera. So we don't have to be doing all of that infrastructure and the water and the paving, streets, et cetera, but we can be part of that grander, grander plan. And another thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, I think this gives us opportunity with the resources to not only work within the district, but also what does the foundation look like for us going forward as well? And leveraging resources outside of the, uh, outside of what the district does. So um, there can be the initiatives, kind of like what we've done before with housing, um, behavioral health, et cetera. Homeless, yeah. And look at how can we partner with other organizations, other funders, et cetera, for those larger type of ni- uh, initiatives. And it could also be with, um, like the, the real estate with clinics and even hospitals, you know, how, how do those partnerships develop that we don't have to take care of it all on our own?
Blue zones.
Yeah, and also understanding like our cities, like master plans, right? Like I can think of the city of, um, India working on their downtown. I can think of the city of Coachella where they've got state funding to work on their walkability, right? Like, um, safe roads. What for people to like walk places? So how can we, um, you know, support those efforts? And again, it's, I don't think that the purpose, or I, I don't see us just working in silos, right? I see us supporting the communities and that's how we're going to build more resilient communities.
Yeah. I love news. This is going so well. Any other questions or thoughts?
Yeah, we have, well, I think with, you know, with some of the conversation, I think with, you know, some examples like with the RFPs and the mobile units, that we are deleting that, that we are setting the parameters and that we're controlling, not controlling, but we're actually setting the, the landscape of what we want the outcomes to be and how we could facilitate some of those, those measures. And I think it, it, you know, those two are, are perfect examples of how we're leading. And then, but also, you know, working with different partners to make sure that we are making the change in the community, increasing access or very focused initiatives where we're having good metrics, where we're showing, you know, good partnership, where we're establishing good partnerships, uh, with different, you know, entities for one very specific initiative, but that we're leading, um, you know, with, with funding and, um, you know, convening the groups as well.
And just anecdotally, the mobile units, in our discussions with partners on the ground, the mobile units keeps coming up. That's highly, highly effective and highly visible.
Question is why? And I think if you drive into why, it's not so much what the unit offers, but it's what it eliminates in terms of these limits to access of care and your social determinants of health. You look at what those eliminate, that does the majority of it. And so the question is, how do you expand upon that model? Is there something more permanent you can do? Because the key is in that delivery of healthcare is working and we know that. One of the partnerships, I think we should add that we kind of brought up a little bit, but we don't get often involved here. It is, we have some very successful, um, people in the community, uh, developers in the community. I mean, there's people that have big plans for what's going on here and we don't really get involved in what they're doing. I mean, you mentioned we get some of the city planners, but outside of that, there are large developers that I personally know that are out here working on projects and they're here to deliver housing, they're here to deliver, deliver even senior care centers. There's people working on it, but there's so many hurdles to get through that, uh, they end up falling short. Like one of them is they've got eight hundred houses they're looking to uh, finish building in La Quinta and energy's a problem. Because Edison can't serve power and Imperial Valley doesn't bring power up here, Imperial Street doesn't. So power, I think you mentioned it Kimberly, like that's a huge problem. So can we eliminate that as a problem? I mean, that's, that's definitely a driver for health is having energy and affordable energy at that.
So we've done, that's why we've done Get to Rise because that's their job is to actually engage with developers and look at some of these projects. But for them to, you know, we haven't really taken advantage of that full opportunity on how we can actually be the driving forces to actually, um, develop some of these housing projects.
What if you want to own the energy field? You can buy, the thing is if you're a public entity, you can put in a solar field, you can own that. And long-term, one, you can set the price of your energy for the people that live there because guess what? It's your return on value that you want. If a private person's going to come in and, they're going to have to make an ROI, you don't have to do that. You can create value using the capital you have here and you can eliminate some of those things. Now, Live to Rise is a good kind of networker for us to connect to the people that are doing it. But if you talk to the people that are doing it and say, hey, what are the, you know, this aligns with what we want done, what are your hurdles? And really the hurdle we can solve is, hey, we can't get this done at the city or state level. We can use some of our connections to do that. We can't get this funded. Like, yeah, we can, we can own this part of your project. We can use it as an investment and then we can dictate like we do at the Las Palmas Medical Plaza, what your rent's going to be. So if you got a new doctor coming into town, we're like, yeah. We give, they give them better tenant improvement dollars per square foot than any other person out there. You know, we, we fund a lot of their build out there and we choose to do that because we can.
And so.
And leverage.
Those are the good ideas. Um, the other thing, uh, just to touch on another idea is when I think about funding is how do we, um, provide, um, funding? Is how do we um, provide um, funding to just bring, uh. I know we've done sponsorships, but how, how do we, um, when you think about the mobile unit going into a community. And why it's successful, the fact that it's accessible, but also is bringing it. Is, is reminding you health is important in your life and you have to think about it. And uh, you, you may not have to go, be able to go to work today, but you have to go to, look at, go and check in with the doctor. So funding, when I think about that, how do we support just making health important? As, as a part of an everyday life until, not just when you have to visit the emergency room. Um, I don't know if that fits in there, but as I'm thinking about housing projects and solar fields and all of these things. I'm thinking about how do we um, start thinking about that strategy of just making, making health. Important, how um, you know, as part of your, your way of life.
I think one of the partners that, that we're missing on here, that we've been doing a really good job. Through our marketing and communications um, department is, would be partnering with media outlets. To get the word out on certain initiatives that could address some of those things that you're mentioning, Director, and the importance of it. This is happening in your community. Can you come in, you know, get enrolled for ACHA, the, the event that we're promoting this Saturday, you know, things like that.
Creating it to like you talked about before, churches, schools, um, media, um. You know, all of these partners that you had over there that were in that other column. I think that that's something that we just have to think about the strategy and how to ensure that that is part of it as well.
The way, the best way that I, the, the way I think about it is who can megaphone our message? Who can take our message, not change it, and get it louder, wider, as quickly as possible?
I, I think you have to add value for that to happen. I think if you have a impact on your community, the megaphone speaks for itself. I mean, the thing is, is like you can say we're doing all this stuff, but unless people are experiencing it, they don't care. You know, and I think to your point, focusing on getting people to focus on their health is so critical. And I think to do that, at least from my experience, seeing patients, like patients that have their other basic needs met, then they begin to think about their own health. The only time they think about their health when those needs aren't met is when it is an emergency. So if you can meet those other things, housing, energy, food, whatever it is. If those get met, then they say, well, I have time to think about myself. They have a good job that pays for some of this stuff. They have health insurance that works. It's like. Then they're like, well, yeah, I can think about myself and take care of myself in a preventative way.
Yes, exactly. Come, come on. This is how you know that our.
That's how we started our day at nine o'clock.
Exactly. How we, we are deeply aligned. We're, we're saying the same things at the same time.
I was gonna say, what comes to mind real quick is the Promotoras uh, framework, right? Community health workers, they work on.
Do you know what Promotoras are?
Yes.
Yeah. I didn't know until I started here.
I, I didn't know before I started working on this project.
Okay, I didn't know. It was a community thing here that I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what that does.
Yep.
And that's why she's so close to.
And I'm sure it's going to be critical to getting the community, you know, that first to come to patients.
And at the free clinics that I volunteer at, the homeless and uninsured people. The first thing they notice is if the student nurses aren't there. Where did the student nurses go? I want to go get my blood pressure taken.
I love it. I think what this highlights is. Um, one, the sewing team is deeply in sync because Sophie and Ori are always reading my mind and saying what. What I'm thinking, um, as well as Leia anticipating our moves as it relates to where we're going. I love this conversation. It, I feel like we're getting into this groove of really getting our ideas out on the page. And our next step in this process, unfortunately, we're almost out of time, but there are more workshops to come. Um, as it relates to work that we're doing through sewing, is really highlighting our work around the strategic pillars. What we'll do during those work sessions is not only take the information that you've laid out today. But also the information that we've decided on and laid out through the workshop section yesterday. And really hone in around those strategic pillars. It'll help us decide out of the funding um, list. Out of the partnership list and the community centered approach, I was still typing things in there, even though we didn't call it out. What can the district really and truly control and put action in? And put into action over the next five years, ten years, twenty years and beyond. What I heard from this conversation is that there are key priorities around equitable access to care. Um, the doctor, who's the cardiologist, I think, I don't know his name. Um, summarized social determinants of health very well. When people have their standard needs met, then they tend to focus on their health overall.
Can we, can we make sure that we capture that as a sewn and then trademark that whole?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. I absolutely love that. When your basic needs are met. Then people tend to focus on their health, when actually it's the reverse. When you're censoring your health. You find ways to ensure that your needs are met in a lot of different opportunities and resources that you can gain. When you're fully healthy, but they balance out each other. So I love that explanation. I will probably use it from now on. In the next phase, through the strategic pillars, we will lay out what the priorities are. What we really want to focus on. We'll gather and take all of this information back and then bring it back to you within our report. I really want us to highlight, this is where I need you again, Leia. When we talk about the status of this work section, session. Um, there were three things that I wanted to accomplish. Two of them we were able to accomplish. The third one, I want us to hold off on because we have more work to do. Did we agree on the district's preferred terminology in our definition around?
Jelica, can you make it a little bit larger or focus on one of them at a time?
Yes, can you see it now?
A little better.
Yep.
Thank you.
Miro, let us be great. We're, we're almost done. So. Did we agree around the terminology as it relates to choosing the social determinants of health? Or the terminus of. On, yes, we agreed on the determinates of health. I am so excited about that. I'm happy we chose one. We also agreed that by us saying we're focusing or using the terminology to social determinates of health. We are not excluding the individual behaviors and factors that contributes to health. Within the framework that we will choose, and I'll lay out how we'll choose a framework. Within the framework that we will choose, we were in, we will include and prioritize individual behaviors within that piece. Now, the second question, did we identify impactful opportunities for the district to integrate the social determinates of health? Into the strategic plan? Did we accomplish that today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. We did. That turned into an hour long brainstorming session. Where we were able to identify things that residents need, priorities and how we can shift and expand the strategic plan. And our engagement to be more impactful. What we haven't gotten to, which I won't say no, we'll say not yet. Is choosing the actual framework and how we will measure our impact as it relates to the social determinates of health. And how we are integrating the social determinates of health into our work. So not quite yet, but that is intentional. As a reminder, when we talk about a framework, come on, Miro, let us be great. Here we are. When we talk about a framework, we're talking about something that mirrors this. This framework and the social ecological model, we want to eventually get some, get, we'll get to something like this for the district. We want to think about where we can make our greatest impact. We want to think about the partners. We want to think about individual behaviors and risk factors. And genetics and so on and so forth. We want to be able to create something like this. With that.
And you share, you share that with us?
Absolutely. Love that slide.
I, I hope that though, that as, as we're going through this, um, and we have a lot of um, of ideas at the table. Because we have a, a lot of, of, you know, we have seven board members that have experiences and have. Uh, um, really good ideas. And then we have uh, the healthcare district staff that have really good ideas. And I'm just hoping that, that uh, we don't have to spend four hour sessions to cover everything. That there's a lot of, of um, uh, processing that you're doing to actually get us started. So that we could then be able to say, yes, we agree with that or now we understand it like you did today. When, when, when I came in here, like not really sure what the difference between the two of them were. But if you, it, this is a really good framework here, but using what we, what you're learning from what you're, from all of us. In this room and others, the people that you're talking to, if you could start just mapping it out. So that you could just kind of um, tell us this is where we're at. What do you think? Are we on? What are we missing? Is, I think it would help us get through this process a lot faster, but not skipping anything.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think we are exactly where we needed to be. Um, what we tend to do when we have these sessions is majority of the time, you've all been having conversations collectively. And even on your own and in the community, but we need to bring all of those thoughts and ideas into one space. And that's the purpose of these working sessions, to do exactly what happened today, to bring people together and offer up their suggestions, their ideas. Their recommendations and their feedback. And then we're able to take all of that into creative and turn it into something like this. So I am so, so grateful for the opportunity to share my knowledge with you all. Being a part of Someone's team and the collective impact of the work that we're doing is such an honor and a privilege. This was great. This was so good. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Sophie. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, this concludes our two day visit. I'm sure you're happy to see us, Bob. Uh, but we did accomplish a lot. So we want to thank you for your time and your commitment. And, you know, we've already accomplished three of the goals that we set out to do in those two days. So we have definitely now have a refined group vision and mission that's going to guide all of our strategic work. Um, we have now had a very honest, uh, you know, discussion on the social determinates of health and what the definitions we're going to be working with. And how we're going to use those strategic pillars. And I really, really want to applaud you because you already hit goal three, which was to increase collaboration. Seeing the staff and the board and everybody who is uh, part of this process. So you've done an amazing job and we want to thank you. And the next step is I will see you back with the feedback that we can provide on the social determinates of health framework. And then we'll work on the strategic pillars. And that is what we plan to do when we come back in early December. Any other feedback that you can give us, Chris, please?
Can you provide those slides that we're looking at, please?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Differences in social.
We will share those when we get back tomorrow to the East Coast.
When are you coming back?
December tenth.
And birthday?
Is that your birthday? So, so.
That's the four hour session and then next day is other two hours. It's going to be cut.
And, you know, we're happy. Sorry?
It's from ten to two?
So we're happy, you know, I mean, we are in the co pilot seat. And we are happy to come at any time that makes the most sense. We've aligned with the existing meeting schedule. To make it as easy as possible to gather everybody. But if you feel that. A virtual session in between would be better, or a weekend session is better for everybody. I mean, we're. Oh, did you, oh, somebody was shaking their head, but we're happy to, to make that happen. If you feel like, you know, a full day session is more, uh, you know, but we, we all acknowledge you all have. You know, day jobs and responsibilities. And so we, we are happy to accommodate it any way possible. But the next big chunk, the more people can be here, the better. It's really identifying those key strategic pillars and then we can talk about. The activities that go underneath and the smart goals to make sure that we're making progress against those, those top pillars. So.
Is it better for the directors for us to look for hour sessions like on a Saturday?
Would that work better?
Evenings, I mean, I mean, ten AM is pretty early. Cases all day.
I'm open.
And there's only two of us, so. The whole valley.
I just prefer to have a, as many people here as possible.
That's kind of absolutely, I agree.
And, and does a four hour day session, Dr. Logstine interfere with your schedule?
I mean, yeah, I did nine surgeries today. Yeah, there's a lot. If we don't, if I'm not there, there's going to be, Wednesday's a very busy day. Probably do, we've got eight surgeries ready booked for that, that Wednesday. So it's just like. It's just you, two of us for the whole valley. So.
So the evenings work better?
It, I mean, if you want to, I can't guarantee it, but if you want participation for sure, like midday, like ten to two is like just.
Brutal.
Hammer time. Yeah.
So we can, we can look at.
If you want to meet, that's fine. I just give me before, after stuff and I can comment on it or listen in.
Then I think it's valuable for.
I'd just like to participate.
Yeah, it's valuable for you to participate, Dr. Logstine.
It was great. We'll look at revising.
Yeah, revising and making it start the evening.
And I might be able to make it earlier. Just depends on what that looks like. We can. And if we can start the meeting on time, we start about six, two.
Yeah, we do. So we'll, we'll look to you, Chris, to, to, to give us that, the best time.
All right.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, bye.
Bye bye.
Were there any other comments? Motion to adjourn, I know. I said again, all, all adjourned.
We can all yours.
At six twenty-five.